Welcome. I'd like to call to order our regular city council meeting for Tuesday, March 20, 2012. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Sylvia.
Mayor Mays.
Here.
Council President Grant.
Here.
Counselor Henderson.
Here.
Counselor Folsom is absent. Counselor Butterfield?
Here.
Counselor Langer?
Here.
And Counselor Clark is also absent.
Thank you Sylvia. We have four items on our consent agenda tonight.
I'll move consent.
I'll second.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you council. Next item on our agenda is citizen comments. Time to address counsel on any issue not on our agenda this evening. Patrick Husky, you just fill out. Welcome.
Thank you.
Please just state your name and address for the record.
Patrick Husky, 233-52 Southwest Murdock Road. I just want to come before you tonight for new business. The last several weeks, we've been, you know, going through several of the tree adoptions and I've been scouring over it, trying to decide how that, you know, implicates or hurts our region. And of course, I live at, on Murdock Road, which all of you should know that it's known as Southeast Sherwood neighborhood and the notorious Kinfoster Farms, which of course DEQ named it for the hazardous waste we have out there. And so as I've worked through DEQ over the last five years, I've been very busy trying to get, you know, some end, some positive end for both me as a property owner, but now it's turned into more of a community game because, you know, I'm the only one willing to fight and to, you know, work with DEQ and try to solve the problem. And I don't want to pat on the back. I just need help now. And so tonight I thought, is there a chance that we think about bringing back the Southeast Sherwood master plan? Because in its infancy, we had everyone involved. I mean, we got money from the state through, with Kevin Cronin, the planning staff here. We had a ton of citizen input, you know. The state was involved. We met Metro. And so I'm looking at going, well, why wasn't that ever passed? Because we had done all the work, just like you all did with Brookman annexation, which failed. And so we over here as the stepchildren are still trying to figure out, how are we going to solve this problem over here? And meanwhile, in the last three or four years, the PUD has gotten changed. Last week, we saw the Nidalee PUD only get six lots. And so now that might not even get developed because of the six lots. And that was due just on one code change. And so now as I look at this tree adoption moving forward, I'm wondering how that's going to implicate or how it's going to hurt the neighborhood. And we're still going to be stuck with contaminated property, not a master plan, and what do we do with it? So tonight, I'm just asking, is it possible to bring that back in a work session and talk about it?
Patrick, thanks for coming tonight and making the suggestion. I think it's a good suggestion. And I will bring it up with Tom and see if we can review what that product was and see, yeah, is it still a good product? From your perspective, you wish it would be adopted in its entirety?
Not necessarily in its entirety.
More or less, but have it, give it a fresh review and see if, do something in that part of our community?
I think, yeah, the density calculations, how they designed it. We had a nice meandering path, greenway. You had your parks that you wanted. We had the connectivity that, you know, every development needs. And yeah, I think it did have a little bit higher density that, you know, but it wasn't, you know, high density. And I think it's a good plan to everyone say, okay, that is the model for that neighborhood. Because now either ourselves can go forward with the development or a PUD, or the property owners can sell it to very quality development staff out there. And what happens is then the property may even, you know, get sold and back on usable, you know, tax base. Whereas right now.
Stalled.
You know, quite frankly, it is a problem.
Yep.
And I'm just asking you guys, you know, it's up to you guys to help lend the way, however that is. So, thanks.
Thank you very much, Patrick. Anyone else like to give a citizen comment on any non-item on the agenda? Are you none? We will move on to new business. Resolution 2012-015, the City of Sherwood providing for the setting of a sidewalk repair fee for property owners choosing to use the concrete sidewalk repair assistance program. Craig?
Thank you. This is page 21 of your agenda. 21 of your agenda. And this is an issue that you've now seen about four times. But this is the actual setting of the fee level after the budget committee discussed it. And I'm bringing to you their recommendation that the fee for this effort be 50% of the cost of the project.
Great. Questions for Craig? I certainly appreciate the budget finance committee reviewing this and weighing in with their recommendation to council. Discussion by council?
Well, I think it should be, I just want to point out that, you know, the budget meeting was a surprise to a lot of people of how it went. I think we had a lot of ideas on the table about how to fund this and what portion of the sidewalk repairs were going to be funded by the city versus the homeowner. And I was really surprised about the recommendation that we came to this point. And the, I think the resounding opinion that brought us to this point was purely the responsibility of the homeowner that is, the repair of the sidewalk is still the ultimate responsibility of the homeowner. But it was definitely an interesting meeting that brought us to the point of this recommendation.
Great. Other comments? Counselor?
It doesn't mention in the resolution, but if a property owner enters into an agreement with the city and the city repairs it, they can repay that over a period of time, correct?
That's-
That's the part where we talk about assistance.
That's in the ordinance, yes.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, it'd be paid over time on their utility bill.
Yes.
So it's not a one-time payment that we're assessing?
Right. It's, yeah.
Due, you know, in 30 days.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other? Counselor?
Following up on Counselor Henderson there, have we given a fresh overview of this to the public so they understand what we're talking about? Because right now it kind of seems like we're just talking about passing a-
Oh, we certainly can-
Trying to make sure they understand.
Great. The, in essence, we have a hazard in our community that partially created by development standards that were created with some parking strips and trees that are creating pop-ups on some sidewalks. And those sidewalks need to be repaired, one way or the other. City council passed a resolution creating an assistance program that put fees, a small fee on everyone's utility bill, to help create a fund to help address these problems. But part of the cost, if it was, if it was a huge project, it's, you know, blatant, not blatant, but certainly instead of one or two panels, if it exceeded a certain percentage of the sidewalk in front of their home, more than 25%, there's no assistance because the problem is so out of control and they needed, it has to be dealt with by the property owner. But if it's a small enough problem, we want to give some assistance if they choose to have the assistance to get it done quickly, sooner rather than later. And, but still have to pay a portion of it. And the finance committee said 50%. That clear as mud?
That was a good explanation. Actually, yeah, we've been talking about this for a long time. And the council has already taken action in order, with regards to everything, as far as how that assistance program is really going to work. The only one question that came out of a meeting and council made a recommendation here from the finance committee was this percentage. So this is really just the very last piece of something that's already been considered and done. But it's good to explain that to people who are just watching for the first-
Right, yes, exactly. I was thinking somebody just popped on TV and was watching. It looks like we're passing some brand-new blank fee. And actually, what we're passing here is a 50% help for somebody-
Cost share.
A cost share. The city's agreeing to pay a cost share of something that homeowner is completely responsible for. So while it appears as a fee on the surface, it's actually 50% help. So I don't want everybody to get hung up on the word fee.
Great. Any other comment or motion?
I'll move you approve Resolution 2012-015.
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor of approving Resolution 2012-015, a resolution of the City of Sherwood providing for the setting of a sidewalk repair fee for property owners choosing to use the city's concrete sidewalk repair assistance program. Say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you council. Thanks Craig. Next is a public hearing. Sylvia, will you please read into the record what's needed for-
The Sherwood City Council will hold a public hearing this evening to hear testimony on ordinance 2012-003, amending multiple sections of the zoning and community development code, including divisions 1, 5, and 8 relating to trees on private property. The purpose of the hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to submit testimony on the above-said item. The order of business the council will follow is to hear a staff report, to receive public testimony, additional staff comments, and then questions from the council. The hearing will then be closed and no further testimony will be received. Discussion by the council will follow. Any interested person may present testimony. If you wish to speak, please fill out the testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. The mayor will recognize those persons wishing to speak. Any questions should be addressed through the mayor. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record as this hearing will be recorded. And please let me your testimony to four minutes.
Thank you Sylvia. Welcome Zoe. Please state your name and title for the record.
You know, I even wrote it down this time. That I would do it correctly. Thank you Mayor Mays. I'm Zoe Monahan from the Planning Department. And this evening, we're going to talk about trees on private property. This is a portion of the code cleanup project that the Planning Department and Planning Commission have been working on for some time now. And before we really get into the code language, I just wanted to walk you through a bit of the outreach that we've done, as well as the Planning Commission's goals that they had established for this portion of the code cleanup. We held a number of work sessions with the Planning Commission, a true panel to get some expert opinion. We had a dessert and discussion, online questionnaire, and also a code cleanup open house. At that open house, we also discussed trees to make sure that we were getting the community's feedback about the proposed language. The goals that are in front of you, Exhibit 1D of the materials that were submitted to, outline the Planning Commission's goals for this portion of the code cleanup. They wanted to make sure that we were headed in a direction and that we didn't just start modifying the code, but we were headed towards an objective. So I just wanted to point out a few to you. Establishing and maintaining the maximum quality tree cover. Establishing and maintaining an ideal level of tree diversity. Establishing clear, fair, and easily implementing code changes. And to establish standards for commercial, industrial, and residential zones. Again, they're Exhibit 1D of your packet if you'd like to look at them in a little bit more So before we get into the recommended updates, I wanted to go through a bit of the issues that we've had with our code. We currently have a mitigation standard for our trees on private property that are subject to land use review. And the mitigation standard can be quite expensive for developers. It's an inch-for-inch requirement. So for example, if you were to remove a 10-inch diameter tree, you would generally replace it with five 2-inch trees, or pay the fee in lieu, which is currently $75 per inch. So that would be $750 for that 10-inch tree. There's also a lack of incentives for tree preservation. For trees on private property that are not subject to land use review, if they want, if anyone wants to remove more than five trees from their site, it does require site plan review. So trees on private property that are subject to land use review, this is the section of the code that has the mitigation requirement. So we're looking at going in a new direction. So rather than having a mitigation requirement, we're proposing to move to a canopy requirement, which is a canopy percentage that each development would need to achieve. And we'll look at a few examples in just a moment of what this really means. So as proposed, there would be a 40% canopy for residential. And for the purposes of this code, that's single-family and two-family developments. And non-residential, which is everything else. So your multifamily, commercial, industrial developments. And we've also proposed some incentives, excuse me, for retention, which we'll also discuss in a moment. So this is a diagram to really show you what we think people might be thinking we're talking about and what our intent is. So on the left of each diagram, these are circles that would represent your tree. So we're not looking to have a 30% or 40% of the development site treed. We're looking to reach an expected mature canopy, which is mathematical. So you would have your acre, and then your 30% would be about 13,000 square feet of trees. So as you can see, they can be clustered. So you could have a tree stand, or you could have trees in your landscaping. So you could have your trees and then sidewalk landscaping and parking under those trees. So we're really not looking to have 30% or 40% of the full development site treed. This is an example of, again, what that could look like. So you have your 30% canopy and how that could be achieved. What I did is broke down the square footage of different types of trees. And as you can see, if you have larger trees, you're going to reach that canopy much faster. And generally, we'll see a number of different types of trees on site. So you could have greenspire lindens and pin oaks and get to that canopy a lot faster. This is Woodhaven Phase 1D. This is a portion of the Woodhaven planned unit development. It's a 54-unit subdivision. And they would achieve the 40% tree canopy with just the street trees that they have on site. As you can see in the picture to the left, over time, people have planted additional trees in their yard. So this is just the minimum standard. And we do expect that with time, people would also add trees to their lot.
Pardon me, I want to make sure I understood what you just said.
Sure.
They complied with the 40% even from the start, from the outset, just with the-
Right. They're at a 59.4% canopy. And that was achieved because of the number of trees that were required when this went in. It was two trees per lot. And they also had a number of trees with a really large canopy spread. So that's how they got there so quickly.
Okay. Thank you. So, not to simplify the thing, but why would we not make it simple and just say, "Street trees meet the standard as long as the street trees' canopies touch"?
We could do that. However, the idea is also to encourage people to preserve trees over time.
Right. So that's a different question. But I mean, from a dealing with calculation and all that stuff, street trees.
It's not something that was really looked at. And this is based on the old tree, street tree requirement. So if I were to break down, what would that look like if it were just based on the spread of each tree? I haven't done that for this development. So this is Jim Fisher Roofing. This is an industrial site on Galbreth in the city. And this demonstrates what we're currently seeing with industrial sites. The trees along the northern portion of the picture, there are eight pine trees there, and that would achieve a 4% canopy. They could have reached their canopy if they added additional trees to the east or the south of the property. We have seen with the Wildrose Mini Storage, which is at the intersection of Wildrose Place and Walton Sherwood Road, they would have well exceeded the canopy requirement. However, it's not a great example because they had so many trees due to the mitigation standard that we're proposing to remove. But it does show that you can have trees in an industrial area that are along the perimeters of the site.
Can I ask you a question there?
Sure.
Did I hear you right when you said Jim Fisher, they have 4% coverage?
That's, they have a 4% canopy with just those pine trees to the north. If you were to add in the 13 street trees, it would be a 16% canopy. They could also have added additional trees to their parking lot landscaping, or along the perimeter if they were to achieve the 30% canopy.
So is their total about 16%?
Right. So it's 16% if they were to use the street trees. As proposed, the language does not include street trees for non-residential sites.
So they're-
Development sites.
So they're 4%.
They're 4%. But again, that, if they were to add additional trees to the site along the perimeter, depending upon the spread of those trees, they could achieve the canopy if they added more trees to the site. This is the Sherwood Theater site. They do achieve the 30% requirement. They're at a 36.9% canopy. And as I mentioned, we've also proposed some development incentives for the trees on private property that are subject to land use approval. There's lot averaging to be reduced to 80%, which we'll discuss in just a moment. A setback reduction sidewalk. Currently, there's a standard that you have a planter strip and then your sidewalk. So to go to a curb-type or meandering sidewalk. Parking lot reduction, residential density transfer, and an increase in the building height for commercial and industrial buildings. So lot averaging, this is a standard that we know that there's a little bit of a concern from the city council because they, there was concern that the lots would go below 4,000 square feet. With our current code, the subdivision reduction at a 90% takes you down to 3,600 square feet for the medium-density residential, high, and high-density residential attached units. So as proposed, this would take you down to 32, which is only a 400-square-foot reduction.
Just dial it back one more for you.
Yes.
Pause on that.
Okay. So it's only that line that, with the circles, that reduces below 4,000 square feet.
So Zoe, I want to make sure I understand this. So obviously, the required lot size, the subdivision reduction, that's current code that's already been adopted. So the second column is something that's already been adopted.
Yes.
And the third column, which is a tree reduction column, 80%, would be something that they're considering, or would be considering today, which then would allow even a further lot reduction.
That's correct.
If this ordinance was passed.
That's correct.
But the average lot size still had to be the five, in MDRH attached to the line that you're highlighting, it still has to be an average of 4,000. Right?
Yes. But you could reduce some lots to the 32.
Right. But the average lot size has to be the 4,000 on that line of things. So they would have some larger lots.
That's correct. Right. We'll look at that when we get to the comment and just verify that.
Because it's the same, same situation with-
Right. Because it's the average. So you have to achieve that.
Same with the MDRH detached, for instance.
Right.
If it was a 5,000 lot, minimum lot size, the average had to retain 5,000, but have a few lots to mitigate around-
Yes. With those trees that were preserved. Yes. Right. It wouldn't increase the density.
Right. As we define density, which is our unique way. We're not changing our definition of density.
No.
Right. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. So trees on private property that are not subject to land use approval, our current code looks at all of them the same, your residential and non-residential. And you can remove up to five trees per acre, not to exceed 100 inches diameter breast height. And then if you wanted to go above that five trees, you would need to go through a site plan review. So as proposed, we wanted to make this a little bit easier for people that felt the need to remove trees. So as proposed, you could remove five trees per year, or 10%, whichever is greater. And then if you wanted to remove more than that, then you'd need to submit a statement describing why that's needed, how you spoke to your homeowners association, and you'd need to replant or replace half of those trees. Non-residential, since these are generally approved with a land use decision, we wanted to make that a little bit more clear. So trees that are required by a land use decision would need to be replaced after being removed. And then if they weren't required by a land use decision, then you could remove up to 25% through a type 1 process, as long as half of the trees were replaced. And then by removing, if you needed to remove more than 25%, it could be done through a type 2 process. And 2/3 of those trees would need to be replaced. I'd like to remind you that a type 2 process does require public notice. So there were some additional minor changes that were also done as a part of the trees on private property. When the open space standards were updated in Section 16.142, some of the code references weren't updated, so those have just been cleaned up. The street tree measurement has been updated to be consistent with nursery practices. And because of that, it's more appropriate for diameter at breast height to be moved to the definition section of this code. We've had a number of questions lately about what does the canopy requirement mean, and how is this calculated? So I went back through, and I wanted to make sure that the code was consistent and clear. So on page 10 of the draft language with track changes, you'll notice that D3 has this, a certified arborist or other qualified professionals shall establish the tree canopy. And to be consistent, I would recommend that you add this to D2 also, which is the residential canopy. And also in D2 and D3, strike new from the fourth line of D2 and the fifth line of D3, just to clarify the canopy requirement. Additionally-
Back up a second, not to-
And this is the track change version.
Yeah. I'm just making notes.
Additionally, after the language is, so in D2 and D2, D2 and D3 on page 10, nine and 10 of the track changes, so Exhibit 1B, it discusses what the canopy percentage is. But in order to clarify how you calculate the canopy, I'd recommend adding something to the effect of the canopy percentage is based on the expected mature canopy of each tree by using the equation pi R squared to calculate the expected square footage of each tree. The expected, excuse me, the expected mature canopy is counted for each tree, even if there's an overlap of multiple tree canopies. This was the intent of the code. However, it hasn't been clear. We've been getting questions from developers who are interested in moving forward with this code language, as well as staff. So I would recommend adding something additional to make that a little bit more clear when the language is adopted. So this evening, I'll take your questions and comments and public comments as well. So your next steps will be to hold the public hearing this evening, adopt, adopt with modifications, or deny the Planning Commission's recommendation. So I'll take any questions that you might have. Hopefully, I'll get a minute to think about them and maybe respond, when I respond to public comments, if that's all right with you.
Sure. I have a few, and then see if anyone else has any before we take this in comment. We have two people that have signed up so far. If others are interested, please complete one of the forms. You added net develop area to your definition. And in reading the proposed language, I never saw that phrase. I saw net development site. But never, and that technically is not defined, but I'm saying that you define net develop area. Is, was that what you were intending?
I was not at the Planning Commission meeting, but they had asked that we make, write a recommend, or, excuse me, prepare a recommendation to propose a definition. But if I- But if I have the terminology wrong, I would be happy to strike it and change it, and I'll just chat with Brad really quickly.
Yeah. Okay. I'm, with the definition of net developable area, if it becomes net developable site, I'm concerned with that definition that, and I'm not sure where this is going to go, but certainly on the industrial and commercial, I'm, I am inclined to want to remove, include in that definition, the footprint of the building, to remove from, from, because in this world we're in today of everyone wanting denser and denser and denser, yes, we're all very much advocates of trees and canopy and everything that that provides, but we also want our commercial industrial to put big, fantastic buildings that employ lots of people and pay, put a lot of value on the land. And I think if you have a, if you don't, if you don't exclude the building footprint, you, we're restricting, you know, the other goals of, that Metro and the state has and the city has for efficiently developing our land.
And if that's something that the council wants to do, that's something that we can add. However, the reason it's not in there is, as you saw, it's possible to achieve that canopy with the parking lot landscape requirements, as well as preserving trees. So, and it's, it's not taking up 30% or 40% of the lot.
Yep, yep. So I mean, I've got more, but that's just one comment there. Concerned, on page 55 of the staff report, page eight of the redacted redline version, on section C at the bottom of the page, it says inventory, inventory one, all, all land use actions above are subject to this, and you have to have a certified arborist for every application.
And we could add the, or qualified professional, like we just talked about in D2 and D3. That's something that we could add to that.
But I gotta believe there's some size of applicant that that is overkill of some So I don't know what that threshold is yet, but I'm just suggesting if somebody's wanting to put an addition on their house, to turn around and have to hire a...
Arborist.
Arborist or equivalent professional, that's a heck of a adder on the fees for a homeowner. So that's a question. On the residential side, I did, to repeat my suggestion of, it seems like we're making things complicated on residential by just not saying, the street trees seem to kind of...
Meet the requirements.
Meet the requirements, and the desires are the planning commission, so we're making this more complicated than it should be. Because as you noted, people move in on the residential side and they naturally plant more trees after they buy, either in the front yard or the backyard. Some are, want lots of trees, and others want a big garden, and if you require lots. And so I think we're making that more complicated on the residential side than we need to. With the example you gave, is it safe to say that on page 10 of your report or page 57 of the packet, when you say item, the retention requirements, item four, you say the city may determine, based on the type of application, the hearing, it's either, it's either acted by the city, it's decided, the city is the staff, or the city is the hearings officer, or the city is the planning commission, or the city is the city council, correct?
Right.
Just so, delete, 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 delete. Moving on to page 14, at the bottom of that, or page 61, point 3 sidewalks. So this is preservation incentives, planting new large statured street trees. Do we have, in our permitted street tree list, do we have large statured street trees? And what does that mean? Are we going to be incentivizing developers to put huge maples? Or is that, I don't think that's allowed because it'll destroy the roads and the sidewalks much faster. The next page of that same thing, page 15, item four, residential density transfer, up to 100% density transfer. If you could give me examples of that whole thing, because they still say lots, still must maintain an 80% minimum lot size. So I'm confused, how you get 100% density transfer potentially? Seems like it's misleading. Do we define what a natural resource area is in our code? It's brought up in, on page, top of page 18, item three, if removal is proposed with That's the, that's the crux of my questions. Chew on.
Zo's still writing.
Bill?
I have two simple questions.
Okay.
One is, how much is Metro influencing the city? You don't have to answer me right now. Secondly, I own a 10,000 square foot lot next to Middleton Elementary. There's no trees on it now. I want to build a house on it, 3,600 square feet. How many trees do I have to plant in order to build my house?
You're not going through land use?
She's doing a hypothetical for you.
Hypothetical.
Right, but you're, it's just, it's an existing lot.
I understand in a neighborhood situation where you've got 40, 50 houses, you're going to have enough trees along the street to meet your density requirements. But I've got a lot.
Standalone.
Been sitting there all by itself for five years. There's houses all around it. Now I want to build on it.
The standard wouldn't apply. It would just be if you were going to go through land use. So if you were, let's say you had a larger lot and you were going to divide it, and you were, you were then going to go through the land use process, then that development would need to achieve the 40% canopy, and that could be achieved using the street trees, as well as preserved trees and trees that are planted on site. I didn't mention earlier, but the canopy requirement as proposed does not apply to Old Town or infill. So if you were to go through an infill development, it wouldn't apply. But if you had a large enough lot to divide, then that two, three, or three lots, partition or subdivision would apply. But if it were just a standalone lot that's already been divided, it wouldn't apply.
So I've got this lot. Do I have to maintain the 40% density?
If, if the, if the subdivision or partition would have come in under the new regulations and certain trees were proposed or retained as a part of that, then yes, you'd have to hold on to those trees, or those trees would be planted.
But I don't have any trees on my lot. It's bare.
Right, it's bare, and you're not going...
How many do I have to plant?
If you're not going through land use, then you don't have to plant anything, because it's already an established lot. So the standard wouldn't apply. You'd be under the trees not subject to land use approval standards.
Street trees would apply.
They'd already be existing. Unless you're, unless you're dividing the lot, the standard wouldn't apply.
I'm just trying to get you to imagine this barren lot. It's got a sidewalk in front of it, and a driveway in front of it. I want to build a house on it.
But building a lot doesn't trigger land use review.
But, do I have a tree, do I have a tree requirement to build my house?
Not, not if you're just adding a house to an existing lot.
So I don't have to plant any tree?
No, because it doesn't trigger land use review.
Okay.
It's just if you're dividing the lots, that if you go through a partition or a subdivision, that you're then triggering the land use review. If you had a commercial or industrial site and you have to go through a site plan review, then you'd need to achieve your 30% canopy.
Or if the lot wasn't developed and we had to go through land use.
Right, right.
Then I'm subject to 40% density.
Right, but, but in the case of existing lots that are already established around town, so any of those residential lots that haven't been built yet, they wouldn't need to meet the standard, because they're not going through land use review. They'd just go through a plot plan review, which isn't a land use review. So it wouldn't apply.
So if I did have a lot and it had to go through land use?
Right, then for the...
How many trees would I have to plant?
Well, it would depend. So if you had, let's say you have that one acre site, then you'd need to achieve the 14% canopy. So depending upon the trees that are selected, I believe it's about 17,000 square feet of expected mature canopy for those trees. So if you took into account your street trees that are required, any, you said there's no trees on site, so maybe you have to plant a few trees, then you would show us in your landscape plan what trees you're planning to plant, and then we can take that, and it's basically a mathematical equation to see what the square footage would be, and then we just divide it into the lot.
I was just trying to make a point.
Oh.
It's not simple. It's not easy. I'm confused.
I was hoping that with that diagram, that it would make it a little bit more clear. Apparently not.
I'll, I'll let others comment, but I'm still confused.
Other questions for Zo, that you can write down and then come back to us?
Should I walk down my list?
You're up.
Keith hit most of them.
Don't, don't, don't repeat any of mine, I already asked one.
Okay. I've got a few, some of which Keith already mentioned, so I'm going to skip those, so just whatever he said times two. On page 10, in addition to something that the mayor said, item four, when the city may determine that regardless of section D1 through D3, the certain trees and stands of trees may be required to be retained. When I ran for city council, one of the things people asked me, why do you want to do it? And I wanted to make sure that, I make sure Sherwood still has a small-town feel. To me, that's, feels like the government all of a sudden's got a little too much power over people to come in and say, regardless, you're, so if, I think if the city's going to choose to use that leverage, then there's got to be some, something, some give back on the other side. So I'm asking for some language that says if the city pulls the trigger on number four, then the, the private citizen, the private property owner gets something in return, because that, that's just too open-ended, too much power. It sounds like we're in Multnomah County all of a sudden. And let me back up. In general, the first time I read through the language is when I saw the, the small summary, I thought this was great. But then once I dug into all the details, it felt way too confusing and too much language. And I think the intent is right. I just think we've made something that should be simple extremely difficult. In fact, we've spent hours in my office for the last several weeks changing our landscape plan, trying to comply with five or six engineers and consultants. We couldn't figure out if we were complying. And one specific question there is, the, the term canopy factor is used, but there's no, uh, units tied to that, if that's in square feet. And that's in a different tree schedule that shows the canopy factor for that tree. And I don't see how they're linked. Can you explain how the tree language is linked to that list where the canopy factor is?
The canopy factor is not a portion of the, the trees on private property draft language. That is the landscaping standards. So with this, it's just looking at the expected mature canopy of each tree, which can be found using just the canopy spread of each tree. So this doesn't use the canopy factor.
Right, isn't the canopy spread found in that same list? There's an, or is there another list of trees showing the square footage for each tree?
No, there's not a list with the square footage for each tree. I guess you could look at what, if, when we come up with a document that has how to find the canopy factor of each tree, it would have the canopy spread in that. But the canopy factor is not part of this section of the code update.
All right, so part of where we got confused is we were assuming that that same list of trees with a canopy factor is the one we'd be using. But what I hear you saying is, is we still have to develop another list showing how many square feet of credit you get for each tree? We haven't got that part yet, because we're trying to do the calculations, but we couldn't.
We're not proposing to provide a list of trees and what the square footage is. So if you were to use, when we develop that list that tells you how to reach canopy factor, you could use what it says will be the canopy spread of those trees in order to do the, the math to find the, the square footage of each tree.
All right, well, that's one of the things I've been struggling with going through the language, because I kept trying to do the calculations and the data's not there right, and it's not available.
And that's one of the reasons that I would recommend adding in that sentence at the end, that, that makes it more clear how you reach that, and that you can have overlapping trees, that was the intent, and make it more clear, since we have had questions from developers lately about, well, what does that mean? Can you have overlapping trees? Do you have to subtract something for that? And that's not what we're trying to achieve. That was a question that we had. It's not something that we're proposing.
Yeah, yeah, I think we, we need to do something to answer that question so people can do the calculation. That's one of the big things I got hung up on. Okay, page 15, item number four, point A, point five, subsections 1, 2, 3, and 4, conservation, easement, open space tract, deed restriction, or dedication acceptance by the city. I'm assuming some of those, like open space tract, are formal defined terms and they're not capitalized. But if they're all formal defined terms, then they ought to be capitalized, and how are they defined? And are there any areas, particular areas in that list that are being left out? Specifically, what I'm asking for is if somebody has a 10-acre site and they have to say dedicate two acres of wetland buffer right next to it, are they getting any credit for that? Appears no, but I just, I want that clarified. I don't, in the previous language, agricultural trees used to be exempt. I don't see them mentioned anywhere in here. Did I miss that? Or say, say if we were, for example, if we were to annexed Brookman, I think there's a Filbert Orchard out there that might have been within that area.
Go ahead, go to page nine, isn't it there?
Where is it there?
Definitions, randomatory purposes of this section, page nine, definite, point four definitions. It says trees planted for commercial agricultural purposes. Yeah, excluded from, yes. Yeah, excluded from this.
All right.
So cover that one for you, Zo.
Okay, got, good. All right, incentives. At, at, at this point, the only incentive I see is increased building height. Is that right, or am I missing something else? Increased building height and then there's some.
For commercial industrial, you mean?
Yeah, for commercial industrial.
I think that's the one I saw.
Sidewalks, meandering.
Meandering sidewalks.
So anyway, if, say if that's the case, what I was thinking primarily of out there at the Tonquin employment area, the biggest asset out there is all those big fir trees. And so what if it's, it's not an advantage for the developer to have increased building height? And they say, well, that's, if there's no advantage to retain the trees, then go ahead and cut them down. Well, I think maybe we need to have a more creative, flexible, broad incentive program there, particularly mature fir trees, which are sort of the, the pillar of this, the history here in our community. So I think something needs to be written specifically to that point. And it's not just around building height. Perhaps it's right against the, the tree code. If, if, if they have to have 30% coverage, but they retain a certain amount of the mature fir trees, then they, they get something in return that is a direct incentive to this language. I think if we're going to stick with the language being this complicated, that we ought to go ahead and put the drawings like you had up here for samples in the language with the calculations showing a pine tree that's worth 197 square feet and show somebody how to do it. And that'll solve a lot of the confusion that we're feeling in the room tonight.
Can I make one more comment when you're done?
Yeah, I think I'm, I think I'm done because you guys said a lot of the other stuff I had.
Why can't we just make it simple? If I have a 10,000 square foot lot, I have to put six trees with a 25-foot canopy on it. That I understand. It can be that simple.
Counselor Henderson, I think you had a couple.
Sure. Let's see. Counselor Langer mentioned the incentive for commercial industrial zones of additional 20 feet of building height. I'm not opposed to that. However, I do wonder how would that be received adjacent to a residential zone? I already spoke to Zo about this earlier, but I was just a little concerned if we, maybe we won't have an example where that would happen, but 20 feet seems like a lot in adjacent to a different zone and commercial industrial.
Good question.
That's on page 43 of our packet, if anybody wanted to know. And then, um, page.
Page 415.
56, in our packet, which I think I've misplaced. There it is. Speaking of inventory, so I'm wondering, how, how do we keep track of, specifically at the top of page 56, item two, trees removed on the property within, within one year prior to the submittal of a development application shall also be included in the inventory. How, how would we keep track of that? Or how would we verify that? And I'm, I'm also inclined to agree with Counselor Langer on if we have a large tract potentially in a commercial industrial zone, which we all hope someday will, you know, be developed, what would be the incentive to a developer, you know, who maybe owns that piece of property now but may not develop for two or three years, the incentive to retain some of those trees? And the reason I bring this up is there's a piece of property on Murdoch where rumor was that, that they were thinking about developing, and so they quickly cut down a bunch of trees. And now they just cut them down, they left them there. Now, now it just, it's a huge eyesore if you ask me. And it doesn't improve the quality of the land, I don't think. But my concern is that, um, this is a fairly broad-reaching code change, and I want to know what we can do so that people don't just start taking trees down prior to the, you know, admittance of a, um, application. And I'm not really sure how we do, we keep track of that. I mean, here we're, we're implying that we want to hold them accountable, but I don't know how we would actually monitor that.
Pretty difficult.
Yeah, and so instead of worrying about monitoring it, provide an incentive that, you know, if you have a piece of undeveloped land, it's treed, you know, finding ways, the meandering sidewalk is one, the building height is one. But if neither of those really apply because of the nature of the zone, could we come up with an idea to help them preserve trees, you know, within the development so that it creates, you know, a very aesthetically pleasing development and, and at the same time reaches the canopy requirement for the zone?
You know, as people in the audience are watching at home or even the, or on the table know, if you have a, if you have fir trees, pine trees that mature together and grow together, when you remove, they, they support each other.
Right.
And so if you remove, you know, all but four.
Actually creates a hazard.
It's actually, yeah, it's actually a hazard. If you remove the perimeter ones, you're created, you actually, if you remove very many of them, you, you create a hazard, you almost have to just clear it. So it's a, it is, it's difficult on, in the fir tree world certainly.
Yeah.
Fir and pine, the evergreens.
I also agree with the, the graph you had about canopy, how you come to the canopy measurement. That was the other note I had is if we're going to refer to that, I think a visual is really helpful for somebody who may have never done this before or who hasn't looked at this in a while. Thank you.
Tom has something.
Sure, if, if counsel's done, I'd like a little discretion and ask to maybe take a quick break before we actually open this up for public hearing, if you don't mind, Mayor.
You bet.
Thanks.
I have to come. Yeah.
After counselors.
Okay. I, I just, I just had a quick question about the residential because it was something that I happened to be involved in about a year ago when I was on the parks board. How does the new changes in the code help a situation that we've already run into with the street trees? And how they say that there's been two and they've been causing a lot of damage on the property? And so how, how then does the average citizen come in and figure out what they're supposed to do from our new code?
So this section of the code actually won't address the street trees. That's, we updated street trees about a year ago.
Right.
And with that language, we changed the, um, street tree requirement. So rather than having two per lot or based on the frontage, it's now based on the spread of the tree. So that's what we're doing to prevent the same issues from happening in the future. We also take into account where things are placed, like your driveway or your lamp post. Right, and then we updated the removal standards so that people don't have to go to parks board any longer to remove those trees.
Right. I just thought I saw something in here about.
The street tree language is in there because we've recommended updating how street trees are measured to be consistent with industry standards. So, um, that's in there. And then we're moving diameter breast height to the definition section. Um, you might also notice the section because we were updating the references that weren't updated as a part of the open space standards.
Okay.
So the, the actual meat of those standards isn't being changed.
Well, that was what was interesting to me as I read through it. I, I thought that we were just doing the commercial and I'm like, because we addressed this before, so I was concerned that maybe we were taking something back that we've already tried to fix.
No, we're not, we're not touching street trees in a substantive way. But the street trees will count as proposed for the residential canopy requirement.
Okay, thank you. And I know this is really hard, by the way, because you guys, you guys have been staring at this so long and you really know it, and, and you're like, what do you mean it's not simple? So I get that. It's hard for me.
Counsel President?
Uh, thanks. Okay, I, I just kind of, kind of want to bring together comments that have been made by many of us about the measurement of the canopy because I'm, I, I want to be clear on what direction we're giving you. Uh, Counselor Langer was talking about a list and, and, and Counsel Butterfield was talking about, you know, just how, how does that measure and all that? Are, are, do you hear us giving you direction to, to put an actual list in, into our code that says a, a maple tree is this and a pine tree is that? Or, or where are you going with this? I mean, how would you even?
Well, right now, we're just asking, asking questions.
Of how it would be done? I mean, what, okay.
About the proposed language and then they'll give us some.
And that's, that's not proposed at this time. The idea was that you could find the spread, the canopy spread from any, you know, there's a number of resources out there.
So there's standardized lists on trees that a developer bring forward. I'm going to develop this land and, and I know, and, and, you know, the Arborist Association of America says a maple tree is this many square feet, so I'm going to use it, and that just becomes accepted, or?
Right, and it's, it's more likely that it would be that it says, this is the expected mature canopy spread of this tree. And then, you know, you take the radius of that and do your pi R squared, and that gives you the square footage. And then the, the intent would be for the developer to say, I have X amount of maples. They're going to get me to this square footage and that equals X. So maybe it meets that 13,000 for your one acre site, and that achieves your 30% canopy. So that's the idea, and maybe I just haven't explained it in a very clear manner.
Well, that doesn't sound difficult to me at all because I, I think that, you know, if, as long as there's standards that would be recognized out there that, that wouldn't be disputed, where a guy said, well, you're using this list, I'm using that list, or whatever. If, if, you know, I, if, if there's some given standard that developers use, it doesn't sound tough. I mean, Counselor Butterfield would, would want a developer's lot, and you'd say 40%, that's the number. Make it 40, make it 40 out of maples or pine or whatever.
Exactly, and the idea is to allow flexibility. So if you have, you know, some, a great tree stand on site that you can use the expected mature canopy for each of those trees, although because they are a stand of trees and it is healthier for the trees to be clumped together like that, you still get the full expected mature canopy for each of those trees to count towards your canopy percentage. And that's really what we're trying to achieve, but it's not just existing trees. There's also, um, for commercial and, and industrial, the landscaping trees that you're required to have. So all of those things together give you the flexibility to meet that canopy percentage. And that's where we're really trying to go. We'd heard from the planning commission, the tree panel, as well as citizens and interested people in the community that they want flexibility, but they want it to be clear and fair for everybody. So this was a way that we felt that we could achieve both of those things. Because flexible and fair and the same for everybody are kind of hard to make into one document and, you know, one standard. So that's how we really got to where we are.
Okay. Tom?
Excellent. We've inundated you just a little bit, and we apologize. I mean, I, my 10 cents is, is, we'll probably want to continue this to, to another meeting as well. But let's take a break and then we will take citizen comment on the proposed language. And then we'll come back and talk some more. So we're in a 10, five, five to 10 minute recess. Okay, we're back. Thanks for letting us take the break. Where were we here?
Trees.
Trees, yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Matt, you're waving at me?
I needed to declare that I've got a potential conflict regarding this subject because I've got a couple development projects that are, uh, soon to be coming to the city. Just want to let everybody know about that. I feel like I can still participate and have fair and clear, honest judgment against the subject matter at hand.
Okay. Thank you, Matt, or Counsel Langer. Did you want to say something before we take public testimony? I think we're done asking questions at this point anyways.
Certainly we have some work to do to prepare some responses, but I just wanted to talk to you for a few minutes about stepping back and taking a picture at the larger objective. I think the largest incentive for a lot of people, unless you don't have trees on your property, is going to be that you don't have to pay for the mitigation and you're not over planting a site. There's certainly some, uh, something to be said for upping the incentives. And I think that we've tried to go after several different types of incentives, and we never really got there. We didn't really understand, you know, like what the issues were, how we could, how, what, what incentives would be available that would incentivize preservation of existing trees? And coming from a private consulting background, I know that developers typically do not want to go in and just remove a bunch of trees because that adds values to their lots intrinsically. But the problem is, is we have to grade for stormwater drainage. We have to put streets in. So I mean, there's a lot of, just because the nature where we live, there's a lot of water and a lot of grading and a lot of things that have to happen, which sometimes necessitates, sometimes necessitates the removal of trees, not always. And I think some of the objectives that we're trying to achieve are that we're hoping to move in a direction that doesn't disincentivize people to come in for development. We're trying to remove a barrier. Uh, just a few quick things I wanted to talk about. The code is a toolbox. We have different sections in our code. I understand we're going through the landscaping standards for parking lot landscaping and, and tree preservation, for lack of, you know, a better title for it. At simultaneously, so some of the verbiage, because you're hearing it, the planning commission is hearing it, is going to intermingle, but they're not the same. Canopy factor is entirely different than what we're trying to achieve here as a canopy. And maybe we can, as staff, look back at the terminology that we use. But that is the proper terminology that's used by Arborists, and so that's what we're trying to continue forward so that actually the people that are putting this together, the professionals, would probably understand it more so than us. But we also have to write it so that we can interpret it and apply it. There was a question about how much Metro has a stake in this. And certainly Metro has a stake through Title 13, and we have a stake through Goal Five statewide planning goals. But even more so, we have standards and policies and goals within our comprehensive plan that talk about tree preservation. The tree preservation that we're proposing, if, if you really step back and think about it, the pictures that Zo had up there, we're trying to maintain what we have to the extent that we can. And then by requiring street trees and Clean Water Services requires trees to be planted within their vegetated corridors, those types of things. We're just trying to maintain a canopy. We're not trying to take out people's right to, to develop their property. We just want to do it in a way that's sensitive also to the environment and to the goals and objectives that have been written into the comprehensive plan. So Metro does have an influence through their Title 13 requirements, but it's more in our probably flood plains and natural resource areas. And you had asked about, we're certainly sensitive to the fact that maybe the industrial and commercial height requirement is not the best incentive for commercial industrial lands. And we're certainly open to any type of suggestions you might have. One, one thing that we might consider is allowing existing mature trees to count two times a canopy or three times a canopy, whatever you're comfortable with. I think that as I thought about it, as we were talking about it, and you were talking about it, I don't, I'm not necessarily sure that a height increase in a commercial industrial zone is necessarily going to be an incentive in a, a community like Sherwood because they're going to a different type of construction, which is going to add cost to them for. So we're, we're open to suggestion. We'd like to hear your thoughts about what you think are incentives that we should be proposing or putting forward, that you think as private property owners or potential developers, ideas that you might have to incentivize this. Because. Because really what we're trying to get out of all of this work is good quality development for the citizens of Sherwood. And that's it. It's just good quality development. And if you think that, um, Jim Fisher Roofing is the type of industrial development that you wanna see, then that's all we need to know. And then we can write standards to achieve that. But if you think, uh, for example, the, the, uh, theater is what you want to see in your landscape, then we need to write standards to achieve that. So what we're trying to do here is achieve a balance between folks that don't want trees and folks that do want trees. But we need your guidance in doing so.
Perfect.
Can I, I just might add one comment and I know they've brought it up, um, before, but, uh, uh, one of the reasons we're here is because of, of a lot of the, um, comments and some complaints that we've heard over mitigation standards, uh, over time. And so, you know, if we do nothing, those mitigation standards stay in place and...
Oh, absolutely. We're doing, we're doing all this for the right reason.
Right. Yeah, so I, I just wanted to, to make sure that we may not have perfectly hit the mark here on, in this effort, but we certainly are trying to improve on something that I think everybody agrees is not working for us as well, so.
Excellent. Thanks, Tom. So we'll let you guys take a break and we have at least two people that signed up to give testimony, so why don't we give them a chance? Patrick Husky?
My name is Pat Husky. I live at, uh, 233-52 Southwest Murdoch Road. It's southeast Sherwood. I spoke to you earlier about bringing back, uh, the Resolution 2006 Das 001 because this process looked to me as a developer and a property owner to be somewhat confusing and I'm glad to hear that you guys were having the same conflicts as I was. I think the intent of the planning staff was, was, you know, to create something simple and in this case, obviously they need to work on it because it's not making it simpler. Um, as a property owner, I do have about 30% trees. It's about five acres. And so I don't have much heartburn on this for my property because I've saved those trees. I've owned that property for six years. I could've clear cut it. Every year I could've annihilate it. The neighbor next door unfortunately was threatened in a meeting and he thought his property was being taken, so he, they cut him. That is totally unfortunate. I hope that doesn't happen here in the future. Uh, but more to the point on this stuff, I think you're bringing up some of the good questions. From my perspective, I'm concerned both as a property owner that somehow this language sounds good, but reality, when it hits the pavement, it's not gonna work out and we're gonna move or lose one lot. And in my region, Denali lost one lot. You know, the proposed Denali? They lost one lot. It's not being developed. It's too expensive, they got contamination, it's not gonna happen. That's one of many properties in my neighborhood that this might have an impact. There's another property out there that, that recently got, or annexed a while back. Uh, they wanted to save the trees. They ran into problems, they clear cut. Now this 40% is gonna be a problem for them. Not to be too critical, if we look at some of the, the options here, I think one of the things that, uh, might be an incentive for the developer is if a property owner does, doesn't have any trees, but the new code suggests 40, which I think is too high, it's probably should be closer to, you know, 25 to 30 to match Tigard or Multnomah County, but maybe give us a credit from the parks and open space. Right now, I just, uh, pulled a permit for a 4,500 square foot house out on my Ironwood Acres and parks and open space was $6,700. Well, if I had to give up some of my land for a tree canopy to benefit the community and the neighborhood, then maybe there's a way to incentivize, you know, me in the future to say, give me a little bit of that back in a, in a credit, in the SDC credit. Uh, give me a minute here. I think one of the interesting things also that I don't have an answer for, just that when we're talking about a tree canopy, I think it's very vague and you guys tapped on it, but if we're talking about a 10,000 square foot lot, it lets use Bill's, Commissioner Bill's, um, scenario. If we're trying to do a partition and it's 10,000 square foot lot, does that mean we gotta cover it in 2,000, uh, square foot of trees? And then what about the property lines? Can we use that tree canopy, uh, that goes beyond our borders? Um, you know, so how do we, how do we collect those or how do we, you know, figure that out?
Yeah, good question. I mean, and part of the comment from staff was pretty much regardless of how close the trees are or as long as the, the trunk of that tree is planted on that lot, regardless of where the spread goes, you get credit for the entire spread, even if they overlap or get off of your lot.
Yeah, true. And then, of course, I probably wasn't paying attention, so thanks for clarifying. Um, you know, I think the intent is great, we just have to tune it up, but one of the most important things as a property owner now is looking long, long term and if this ordinance, ordinance eliminates buildable lots, I think you as a council have to look forward and say, we're gonna need that tax base someday. Because the 45 million that you have for improvements are gonna be gone and Metro is gonna continue to squeeze the available land within us. So we're really talking about an infinite number of buildable lands available for you and the next commissioner and all the taxpayers down the road. So, I mean, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thanks, Pat. Justin Wood? Welcome, Justin. Please just state your name and address for the record.
Justin Wood. Uh, I'm with the Portland Home Builders Association, 1555 Southwest Bangy Road in Lake Oswego. Um, I wanna thank you Mayor Mays and members of the council for letting me say a few words here. Um, first, I wanted to applaud the efforts in the city for trying to incentivize as opposed to penalize, um, working with developers because I think anytime we can do that, it is a good direction to take. Some of my comments here are gonna be probably a little sporadic because, and across, just across the board, because I've been kinda working off of what I just found out about in the last couple of days, because the, we, as the Home Builders Association, most of us didn't know this was going on. And so I called and talked to several of our developers out here to try to get up to speed. So I'm gonna try to touch base with your staff and try to get more in the loop on this in the future. Um, I've served on several different jurisdictions in terms of working on their tree policies and I actually just, in, in terms of looking over some of this, um, I wanted to just kinda share some of my thoughts and what, what Sherwood's proposing. You had mentioned Multnomah County. I was on the Portland tree plan. Portland's only a 33% coverage, so it's actually, this would be higher than what Portland requires. One of the things they do there that I find to be a lot simpler, which is one of the rare times, I'll say that about Portland, is they just have on new development, a two inch per thousand square feet of lot. So if you have a 5,000 square foot lot, you wanna build a new house on it, you have to plant 10 inches of tree. That could be one 10 inch tree or that can be five 2-inch trees. But it's real simple when you're looking at a building plan to just know that's what I have to plant. And I think that makes a lot more sense to people than, than the average layperson as opposed to knowing how, how much canopy of a particular tree. Tigard is working on theirs right now. One of the things they're doing is they have 40% across the entire development, but only 20% on each individual lot. What that basically means is if you have a large grove of trees that you save, you get credit for that across your whole development and you only have to average 20% on each individual lot, which gives you a little bit more flexibility on what you do on each lot. So that's one thing I would consider looking at here too. Also, in Tigard, one of our members actually, um, worked with a couple different other developers and they, I hired a helicopter and flew over some Tigard and, uh, the mayor's house and a couple of other peoples there and actually measured what their, their canopy was. And they found out on most houses, once they got up to above about 30%, the, there was very little lawn there because the shade created on the lot made it really hard to have a lawn, which also, um, moving forward makes it hard to have solar on homes. That's a side effect to a really aggressive tree canopy is it makes it harder and harder to have solar. Um, Mayor Mays, you mentioned using the, the net buildable lot, which I would strongly advocate for. You shouldn't, you know, when you talk about a net buildable lot, a 40% of a net buildable lot, you should take out the building footprint, I feel. If the percentage of higher, it needs to be a little bit higher, you know, 50% or whatever, but regardless, I do think you should take out how much of the house because that's a real fair example. Also, a couple of the pictures, the industrial examples, like the movie theater, um, those particular examples had really large parking lots and I think we have a lot of planter strips there that you can plant a lot of trees in. I'd wonder if you had an example that was a fairly large industrial building with not much parking where you would plant the trees. Um, I know it's not here in Sherwood, but I, I used to do some work with Helzer and Twaddleton and they have a really big manufacturing facility and a very small parking lot. I don't know where they would plant the trees. Another thing, um, the types of trees here, if canopy is the ultimate goal, what, I think what'll happen is you'll get a lot of people planting trees that have the maximum canopy, like maple trees, for example, and so you'll end up a community of maple trees as opposed to fir trees, which is native to our region because fir trees don't offer as big of a canopy as some of the more deciduous trees do. One of the things I noticed in the plan was that, uh, an Arborist plan could be required for landscaping or tree planting. Um, I would caution against that because you could end up kinda getting what the Arborist wants in a development as opposed to what homeowners would actually want when the home gets built. Um, I'd also heard something about incentivizing the tree protection by allowing a two-time or a three-time bonus. That is something the City of Tigard is doing in their tree plan to incentivize, to actually give a little bit more bonus there so that you get extra credit when you save trees. And then just real quickly, I'll finish up here, but, um, I know, there's been a couple mentions of Metro and I know Metro across the region is generally pushing more and more density on all of us and it's, it seems like we tend to have, uh, two different goals. We have increased density, but then we also want increased tree canopies and it's, it's hard to see how those two things work hand in hand when you're trying to pack more and more units onto smaller and smaller lots, but also add more and more trees onto the property, so.
It's a, it's an interesting tug of war.
Yes. So.
Great.
Can I ask you a question?
If, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Those are your comments. So you mentioned that Portland, uh, you kinda hit on the question that a lot of us are talking about, how do you ca, how do you calculate it? I mean, 40% doesn't seem like a difficult calculation to me, particularly if I'm about to endeavor upon, uh, building a house, you know? And so if I'm, I've got that amount of ability, it seems like I could do 40%. But, um, Portland, you're, you're saying does it one way. What, is it unusual, is our method of computation based on canopy size, whatever the percent is, is it unusual? You, you say Tigard uses that method, all their, their numbers are a little...
It's, it's not unusual. I've heard of some other areas doing it. As I said, Portland does use a 33% was their goal, that was their stated tree percent. They've got kinda two goals that they're...
Their goal's 33%, but, but, but they're staying, but, but the law is inch of...
Their, their goal is to have a 33% coverage in the City of Portland, that's their goal. How they achieve it is by telling you to plant, they've kinda done the calculations and said that we want new development to plant two inches per thousand square foot of lot. And so they've kind of done that math and so, um, you know, I've, I, my problem with the canopy is I can figure it out too. I think it's just, I think there's more, a little bit gray area and discrepancy as far as what people feel this tree has X much canopy or that tree has that much canopy and you're kinda, um, you're, like I said, you're gonna end up going with trees that have the maximum canopy effect and you're gonna get the same trees all across the, the region. And on top of that, you're gonna end up with, I think the city's gonna end up with a lot more leaves to pick up when everybody's got maple trees out in their front yard, but...
Perhaps. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Welcome, Gary. Please just state your name and address for the record.
Gary Langer, uh, 17384 Southwest Timber Crossing, Sherwood. I didn't have any intention to testify until I heard all this information tonight. I walked in and I read the manual over there with all the tree code information and I found it really requires a lot of input. So I got some little quick notes and I'll just go through them. Being a teacher, if I was to give you guys a test, everybody would have a different answer up here because this code has a lot of differences of what it applies to each thing. So it has to be a lot more user friendly because if a builder comes in that door and you try to explain it, all this stuff is gonna be different from each one of you. So the language is way, way too much, too constrictive. The impact and restrictions came across to me with small lots. You're gonna have little tiny lots. I think Bill asked a really great question, how many trees? Well, we kept skirting around the issue, kept shifting the answers. Anyway, I was thinking about the restrictions on some of the lots that might have a great big tree on it. So you're already compromised with what you can do with your footprint of your house plan. Impact to commercial parking. Uh, BMC that's vacant right now, but if you have to fill that place up with trees, it's made for like parking like lumber and trucks and equipment and stuff. And so Linda had a really good comment on that and that's where I picked up on that. And then who's gonna measure the development, uh, before and after? Somebody's gonna have to go out there and have this information to come in here and say, well, no, 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 you're, you're 38%. Well, we require 40, you're off 2%. You're denied. So it's just one of those little things. So the footprint of a house could be denied based on tree coverage. Uh, the perimeter, not counting, the perimeter on any kind of a business should count because if it's a big business like the theaters or wherever, you got your trees around the outside perimeter, that, that's a big factor like the Target store or any of the others. How to figure out all these codes, you've come up with all these numbers and finally my last one, the time delays to developers to try to meet these requirements if they have to have a tree specialist or have somebody come in and try to figure out how these codes are gonna work. So that's why I wanna go back to the very first one. It has to be a lot more user friendly than it is right now, so. I thank you for listening. I had no intention to be up here. I just sat there and the more I sat there, I thought, this is getting crazier by the second and I'm just wondering how somebody's gonna handle it. So I thank you for your time.
Great. Thanks, Gary. Eugene Stewart?
Eugene Stewart, Beale Box, 5C, Fort Sherwood, Oregon. One of the things that seems to be missing, what is the goal for tree canopy coverage for the total city? Is it 10%, 20%, 30%, 40%? Then, once you reach that, do you have good reasons why we are trying to attain that percentage? And once you have good reasons to attain those, then how can you do it? Is the next question. And what is the city going to do within their city parks? Uh, I can remember when there used to be stands of cedar trees in St. Louis and Park. Should the city go down there and be looking at that and planting groves of cedar trees in there again? That's where they were at. Uh, what's happening up at Snyder Park? Do we have a conflict between ball fields and, uh, canopy? What is the canopy requirements if you develop a new park? With the baseball field, you know, how do you meet that? I mean, there's lots of spaces up there in Snyder Park, there's no trees planted. Can you infill that and make that part of the overall goal for the city?
And for clarification, there are trees planted, there's lots of trees planted, but there is a, two big ball fields up there too.
There's lots of vacant space up there on the, on the downhill side there.
I'm just saying, there are...
Construction roads that need to be. And so, look at all the space along the cricks, uh, that move through the town, that lay kinda jumbled up and overgrown and everything. Uh, how can we develop that? You know, you need more trees along the banks, would that help? Do, I mean, where's the green space supposed to be? Because I live up on two acres and I would imagine that I get close to 80% canopy. And that leaves, let me tell you, a lot of moss around. Very hard, no place to plant a garden. People, what happens if they wanna garden, whether it's flower or vegetable? They will not be able to do it. Uh, some plants need sunshine. Where are those supposed to be planted? Why do you deny people the right, maybe to plant those if your canopy coverage is going to preclude them from being able to? So it seems like there's a lot of good ideas. I personally feel that you need more public input, sit down, and a lot of these problems should've been resolved before it came to council, even to the Planning Commission.
But, you know, in defense of staff, Eugene, um, they had multiple, the staff had multiple list, listing sessions to get feedback, including, um, developers and, um, environmentalists, advocates for tree camp, canopy. And then they had multiple, uh, meetings with the Planning Commission before it came here today. Doesn't mean we're, you know, from comments, you know, there's more work to be done, but, um, your, um, criticism is a little bit... your criticism is a little bit.
What I'm trying to tell you is that evidence from what some of the testimony here is that these people probably would have liked to have gotten involved in it, too, but never had the opportunity.
Well, you have a clear example of that you're testifying, and they've testified, and if they missed prior opportunities, they're being heard today.
But that, you know, if a lot of this could be hammered out before the public hearings, things, I think a lot of.
We're not doing backroom deals. We're doing public meetings, public outreach, and so.
Anyway, one last thing before you take up all my time. You know, I think one question that was raised is the solar energy. What are your ordinance to protect solar energy access?
Great.
I think that needs to be accessed before you go too much farther with this. Thank you.
Thanks, Eugene. Anyone else like to give testimony? Great, thanks, guys. We will close the public hearing.
Come on back up.
Do you want to give any feedback on questions we asked earlier at this point? What do you, or feedback from testimony from the public that was made?
I think it might be better for staff to take in what we have tonight and maybe prepare a response and come back to you. Think about some of these issues and maybe make some proposals where we think we can to help clarify some of the language. I think, I just want to back up, because I really do think it is simple language, but I think it's easy for us to get lost in it because we work with it so intimately. I'm not an accountant. I couldn't go into an accountant's office and understand everything that he does, and I don't expect that somebody can just walk into my office and understand everything I do within a day. I certainly, and I think as staff, we certainly strive to make things as simple as possible and remove barriers, especially in this economy, and I think that's one of the objectives of this code cleanup process, because we've had a really busy time where we had a lot of development, and we can learn from those mistakes that we made along the way. But I'm not sure that it's truly going to be a simple fix.
Well, in some, I think there are simple things that can be done. The fact that from a standard on the residential side, it could be as simple as you have to have street trees that, when mature, they overlap meets the standard, and if they plant any more, great. If they preserve, protect, then the preservation is a different piece. If you have significant trees, you have incentives and mitigation options. We're going to be doing separately a landscaping standard, which will really deal with a lot of the commercial stuff of what we will expect in parking lots of commercial properties and industrial properties, because they are really different. And as people have brought up, you know, and I don't know how to get around, or the commercial is much simpler because they're not dealing with big trucks and a lot of parking. Industrial's also a different beast, because yes, you've got parking lots for employees, which is very limited, but if it's a type of project where they're parking a bunch of 18-wheelers or huge service trucks, you know, on a big slab, how do you deal with that? So that's more unknown, but just the footprints of buildings, you know, I think should be removed from the deal. And then, in general, if, other than, you know, a few categories, if it's in a significant natural area, stream corridor, 100-year floodplain, end of the day, if they can't work around trees, the property owner needs to be able to have the right to remove those trees and then plant new ones, of course. So I think it can be done simpler. So I would certainly, and I'm glad you're willing to tackle that and do that. And then, you took, you wrote down the questions that we brought up on a lot of those things, and I know you'd be able to chew on that in the time, and I really appreciate you doing Great. Any other feedback at this point before I move to continue this?
Can I make a comment really quickly?
Absolutely.
Before you do that? I just wanted to make a few things a little bit more clear. It sounded from some of the council's questions and the public comment that a few things weren't that clear, and I wanted to stress that the canopy requirement and the percentage is per development and not per lot as proposed. And when we're looking at that mature.
But again, it depends if you're talking industrial, commercial, residential. Because generally, if it's industrial, commercial.
It could be one lot.
The development is typically, very commonly, it's one lot.
It can be. But just as I'm viewing it in my head and we're talking about residential, I wanted to make sure that it was clear that that's, it's generally a subdivision that we're looking at, and that's per development and not necessarily per individual lot. So I wanted to stress that.
Yep.
And that we'll look at the canopy, how people are meeting the canopy percentage during the proposal. So it's expected mature canopy that we'll be looking at, so we won't review it and then go back in five, 10 years and see if it's achieved that canopy. So that's not the intent to.
Right, because per our code, if I bought a house that had 10 trees on it, I can cut them all down other than the ones on the street.
Well, you could remove five under our current code.
A year.
What you were saying, over two years, right?
Right.
Okay.
True.
I'm just, I'm saying, you know, it's, and I know, and I apologize, sorta. But it's true. If I bought a house that had, that was fully landscaped and had 10 trees on it and had three street trees, I could move in and immediately cut down half of the seven others per our code, immediately, as soon as I take possession. Just saying. In the same venue, I might remove them all and plant four others because I didn't like the species that were planted. You know, people are all unique in what they want in their yard or don't want in their yard. So, any other comment?
Zoe, thank you so much. I just want to apologize for, we're not being hard on you. We are just, we are laypeople to the tree standards. We are laypeople, so.
And it'll all be fine. It's all going to be good. With that, Tom, when, in looking at our, to enable staff appropriate amount of time to chew on it and looking at our forecast, is it safe to say that the first meeting in April is not a good thing?
No, I think staff will want to take a little bit more time to consider the comments we've heard today, try and meet the comments from council. So I would actually suggest May 1st, which is the first meeting in, first Tuesday in May, as the date to continue this, too.
Excellent. Then, with that input, I would move that we continue this public hearing on Ordinance 2012-003 to the first meeting in May, which is May 1st, 2012.
Second.
Moving to seconded, discussion on the motion. All in favor of continuing Ordinance 2012-003 to May 1st City Council Meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, staff.
City manager, staff department reports.
I do not have a report tonight, Mayor, so.
Very good. Council announcements. Counselor?
I just wanted to apologize for being late, but it was for a very good purpose. I came from the high school where all of the Sherwood School District choirs performed. It was great, very fun to see. Four elementary schools, two middle school choirs, and two high school choirs.
So you were taking in entertainment, personal entertainment versus.
My son was involved, and his father had another commitment, so.
Yes, and I appreciate you giving this out of its heads up. You were missed, but we're glad you're here.
Yeah, that's why I was late, but it was great. And I wanted to congratulate all the choir teachers and the band teachers, because they did the same thing about three weeks ago. So it was great. 294 band students.
Excellent. Other announcements? Seeing none?
We're adjourned.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.